I'd like to call our meeting to order Paramount Planning Commission November 3rd, 2023. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of members, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Present.
Vice Chair Sparza? Chair Weisenberger?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Commissioner Sparza.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes.
Okay, agenda item number one, approval of minutes from October 4, 2023. Need a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Stand.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes.
Okay. Any public comments so far, John?
Uh, no public comments.
Okay, let's move to our new business then. Public hearings. Agenda item number two. Amendment to conditional use permit number 828. This is a request by Rio Luna for the Huchata Rio Luna to expand customer seating at 15950 Paramount Boulevard in the PDPS zone. This project is a Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Article 19, Section 15, 301 of the SEQA guidelines. Staff report, please.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be giving, excuse me, the presentation on this item. And as you said, uh, this is, um, a request to amend conditional use permit number 828 to add additional seats at the Huchata Ria, Rio Luna. The Huchata Ria is located at 15950 Paramount Boulevard in the PDPS zone. The site contains 24,935 square feet with a building measuring a little bit more than 7,000 square feet. And the suite that the Huchata Ria is located in contains 1,432 square feet. By way of background, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit to the Huchata Ria to operate a coffee shop with customer seats and a drive-through. In October of 2021, the city council approved a live entertainment permit to allow for open mic nights. And this past October, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit to allow the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption. Here's an aerial of the property outlined in red and the property to the south, um, in the hash, I'm sorry, outlined in yellow. And the property to the south outlined in the hashed yellow, um, is the bank. And I'll talk about a shared parking agreement in just a minute with the bank. And here's a site plan with the building outlined in blue. And here's a floor plan with the new seats highlighted in blue. And I'll look at the property in a northeasterly direction. So the applicant is proposing to add seats to a total of 138. Forty-six parking places are required. And these are made up through a joint parking agreement with the bank to the south and the parking at the Huchata Ria property. And we're recommending that you approve the amendment to conditional use permit number 828. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, I have a question. The, uh, the extended seating, what's there now?
How many seats do they have now?
Yeah, the, the area that they're using to extend the seating.
Oh, let's see. Okay, so, yes, so, uh, the, um, existing is in the white and then the extended areas in the highlighted blue.
Uh, John, was that area used for some other purpose before the blue area?
It's just, um, no, you know, they were doing, um, I think they were doing art exhibits in there previously or, um, pop-up, pop-up events.
Yoga?
Yeah, they were doing a couple of different things in there, right.
Any other questions?
No, I think it's a great idea. You know, if it's going to keep our businesses in the city, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, let's open the public hearing portion of our meeting. Do we have any testimony tonight, John?
Uh, nothing in favor or opposed.
Okay. Then we'll need a motion to close the public hearing portion, please.
Gonzalez moves to close.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes.
Okay, so let's move to, uh, motion now to consider this. City has recommended that we approve, so we need a motion to adopt this planning commission resolution, uh, number 23037, request by Rio Luna to expand the customer seating. We have a motion.
Gonzalez moves to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes.
Okay, let's move to agenda item number three, conditional use permit number 938. This is a request by Steve Boss, manager, Paramount Place LLC for Stinking Crawfish Restaurant to expand an existing 100-seat restaurant to a permanent outdoor dining area at 8009 Alondra Boulevard, Suite B, in the PDPS zone. This project is a Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Article 19, Section 15, 301 of the SEQA guidelines. Staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Uh, this is the, um, third restaurant patio that we're doing through the city's alfresco program where we're offering grants to provide, um, the design, construction plans, and then a grant for the actual construction itself. And, um, we'll have one more, uh, that will probably come before you, uh, in a couple of months. So we'll have a total of four by the time we're finished. So John King will go through this report. He's also going to go over the design aspects of it, um, during the conditional use permit presentation. So we'll get both, um, a look at both.
Thank you, John. Um, thank you, Chair Weisenberger and Commissioners. Um, just to start off, this really is a, a team effort, um, for this outdoor dining program. You'll remember our, our special projects manager, Kevin Chun. He's been instrumental in, um, in, you know, handling these projects. And then secondly, the report before you was actually put together by our planning intern, Leslie Corales, who's not here this evening. So I'm just kind of, um, presenting on, on their behalf. And, um, you know, we like talking about restaurants, like yet another restaurant. This is, uh, as John mentioned, to expand, uh, the seating to the outdoors. So there is that temporary, um, portion now, or it's, the remnants are still there. They, they haven't been, um, serving outdoors for some time. But that was nine seats in the temporary style. Now with this permanent proposal, it would go down to, to six parking spaces. So we, we feel, um, that's, that's, um, the perfect balance. Again, at 8009 Alondra, so it's the northeast corner of Alondra and Paramount. And this development is, um, known as Clearwater Crossing, a nod to the past. And, uh, .77 acres. And, um, as John mentioned, the review board will, um, has the, uh, the design on the docket. So this next slide shows an aerial photo and, and where it is. So again, it's at the northeast corner, Paramount and Alondra, one of our most prominent, if not the most prominent intersection in town. And, you know, as you know, there are two buildings. The building to the, the west has three tenants. And this building to the east, uh, Stinking Crawfish, um, shares space with Smoke and Fire Social Eatery. And their, um, their spaces outlined in, in red on the building there. And you'll see the, the second red square, that's, that represents where they're proposing the, uh, the permanent outdoor patio area. On this, um, view, you can kind of see how the, uh, outdoor area was, or still kind of, kind of is. And, uh, on, on the, the north portion, the, the uppermost portion, it says to restore parking. There'll be, uh, the three, uh, parking spaces that would go back there. So again, the building was, um, well, and the development was approved by the review board, 2016, constructed. And the, uh, planning commission approved a couple, um, or two conditional use permits. One for the restaurant use itself, and then one allowing for full alcohol service for, um, onsite consumption, meeting our requirements and, um, ABC, the Department of Alcoholics Beverage Control. So they're open Mondays through Sundays. They're open 11:00 a.m. to, uh, 9:00 p.m. That's what they're, they're permitted for, um, and some, there are some occasions that are not open to that extent, but that's the, um, you know, their envelope. Sit-down restaurant, and it's Cajun seafood and a number of other tenants, as we mentioned. Here are a couple of photos. So the photo on the left, that was taken about a week or two ago, um, and that's looking, uh, west at the, at the building. And you can see how they had those temporary barricades and, um, some posts with some nice string lighting to kind of liven it up. But you could, you could tell it's, um, very temporary, some potted plants. And, um, so it, it served its purpose, um, during, during the COVID times. And at the right is, um, another view, you can see the, the table there. They had a really nice design on the, on the concrete. But what we're going for with this new proposal, and here you see the, um, the site plan, what we're going for is something that, um, has, can, can take a, a little bit of, um, I don't know, a little bit of abuse from a possible stray car or two. So the, the perimeter will be more of a permanent nature with landscaping and concrete barricades for, to protect, um, the diners. Here it is up close, you'll see the three parking spaces to the north that are restored. Um, the, the seating's there, it would be, um, compliant with ADA, Americans with Disability Act, um, regulations. There's also, you're also looking at a glimpse of the seating on the inside of the restaurant and the, um, and the kitchen. And here you are, it's kind of twisted, it's north is on the, um, on the right side. So those, there are, there's a close-up of the seating. So there would be, uh, a canvas cover, um, above, so to, to protect the diners. And you can kind of see the, uh, where it says planner pottery pots and, and ballards, five, uh, five, the, the ballers are the, the protective, um, barricades. And here's another look, um, and you can see the shade umbrellas depicted here. Outdoor, um, the heat lamps that makes it nice and cozy on those, those cold evenings. And, um, with that, we, we do recommend approval and, um, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Any questions from our Commissioner here?
I enjoy their food.
You do. I have a question, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask, um, I know this is said, it's under the alfresco dining, um, that program or whatever. Is there a deadline for that? Because I notice we're getting a lot more for our restaurants and probably in other cities as well, but ours in particular.
Um, you made a deadline to spend the, the money?
Right to do it, yes.
Yeah, right, so, um, yeah, it was federal, um, American Recovery Plan Act, uh, money that we got. We put that into the general fund, and so, um, we've met the deadline to spend it. I think the deadline is the end of, um, 2025 or 2026. But we're not under the deadline because we've, um, we put the money into the general fund, so we'll be paying for these projects out of the general fund now.
Okay. But I mean, just for the alfresco dining program, is there a deadline for that?
No.
Oh, okay, good. So somebody that wants to do it later on?
Well, um, yes, we would have to get more money for that. We've, we've got budgeted for four right now.
Thank you. John, has the alfresco dining program, has that sunsetted now that the pandemic's over?
It has.
Okay, so restaurants are expected to have all their customers inside now?
That's correct.
I see. Thank you. All right, well, let's open the public hearing portion of our meeting tonight. Uh, John, we have any testimony?
Uh, nothing in favor or opposed.
Okay, very good. So there's no testimony for or against. So we need a motion to close the public hearing portion. You get a motion?
Gonzalez moves to close.
Timmons, second.
Been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes.
Okay, then, uh, we need to entertain a motion, uh, to adopt this planning commission resolution number 23038, uh, a request by the Stinking Crawfish LLC to expand their existing 100-seat restaurant to a permanent outdoor dining area.
Motion to approve.
Gonzalez moves to dock.
Okay, it's been moved to and seconded then, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes.
Okay, agenda item number four. Conditional use permit number 948. This is a request by Michael Abbas, Pump Engineering Incorporated for Weber Metals Incorporated to operate a machine shop and laboratory at 16706 Garfield in the M2, that's the heavy manufacturing zone. This project is a Class 3 new construction conversion of small structures. Class 3 categorical exemption pursuant to Article 19, Section 15, 303, and Class 11 categorical exemption pursuant to Article 19, Section 15, 311 of the SEQA guidelines. Can we have a staff report for this one?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, this is for, uh, Weber Metals, and they're doing, um, a little shuffling of, um, uh, operations and adding some, a small amount of floor area. And John King will go over the details with you.
Thank you, John, Commissioners. So, um, in, in summary, it is to operate a machine shop and laboratory, and all kind of tied together, a testing lab. Um, the property is, um, at 16706 Garfield, and this may be our largest property in, in town. And it's owned M2, it's in the central industrial district and the south central portion of the city. And, um, the development, development review board does have this, um, as a complimentary item, um, this evening. And here's a look at the property and the, the location on the right is an aerial photo. It's outlined in that bluish color of some sort. And it's, uh, in the middle of this campus, the 22-acre campus, um, what's called Building F. There are a number of, of buildings in this area. The, what's interesting is the, uh, company goes back to 1945, the Weber family. And just fast forward to 1979, the Weber family's, um, sold the, the company to Otto, Otto Fuchs. And I believe that means Fox in, in German. So you'll see their, their logo has, has a fox. So it's, um, 359 employees, but they're still going strong with the international ownership. And, um, I guess the interesting part I was alluding to is they, they start off in the middle of that campus, kind of where this building F is. And they've kind of sprawled out from there since then, since that time. So what they're proposing with, with, um, we have before you is a 1,765 square foot second floor addition and a portion of that, um, building after, which is mostly a, a storage building at this time. It would include a 366 square foot stairway. And it, also with this project, you'll have, uh, new doors, window, ceiling, power, new power and data improvements and some partitions, kind of moving things around, as John mentioned. They would relocate existing equipment. And, uh, and the testing lab, part of the testing lab, it's important to point out, there are some, some chemicals used. They are stored in small quantities and the, um, as part of this project, the applicant contracted with, um, a, a planning and environmental firm, Blodgett-Balosis. Um, the applicant is in the audience, representatives from Blodgett-Balosis are, are also in, in the audience if you have any, um, more technical questions. And they can, um, review, uh, you know, anything about health and safety. Here's, um, a site plan, as you'll see, Garfield Avenue on, on the left side, on the west side. And, uh, this is all south of Harrison Street, so you can see in, in tan is the, um, Building F. And the project area is the southernmost portion of, of that building. And here's how the building would look. So it's, um, pretty close to what's there now, but it's, uh, it continues with the, uh, the metal look, the, um, some corrugation, corrugated metal of the, um, that building and the surrounding buildings and replacing the windows and doors. And there's a, a roll-up door involved, and I just wanted to show you a, a section. So this is actually looking on the inside behind a, a wall, but there's the staircase going up to that mezzanine area. So it all ties together, um, everything's, um, decorative for what it is. And with no, um, you, there would be no public view from, um, the public streets, from either Garfield or Harrison. So again, um, Blodgett-Balosis conducted a environmental analysis in accordance with, uh, SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. And they found that the project is consistent with industrial uses and it's consist, typo there, and the project is consistent with the central, um, business district or central industrial district. No significant impacts are involved, and they're recommending, um, category, uh, what's called a categorical exemption under SEQA for three categories. Class 3, that's, um, for new construction or conversion of small structures. And Class 11, which is, um, accessory structures. And, um, with that, staff supports, uh, the, uh, a positive, uh, recommendation here. And, uh, if you have any questions, we're all here to answer them. I did want to point out one, one thing that is something that's interesting. Uh, the code requires for businesses, metal manufacturing businesses with AQMD permits, AQMD is the South Coast Air Quality Management District, to install a, um, a sign, a, a construction sign explaining what, what's happening. This will be the first such project to, um, to have one of these signs. So they, um, this project triggered that, um, sign, which is more, uh, in the spirit of transparency for, to the, to the public. Just wanted to add that.
Thank you, John. That sign is only, uh, posted during construction?
It will be, uh,
It will be a permanent, uh, well, during the time of construction, it will be there at all times. A, a wood sign staked into the ground for the public. Anyone who's curious could take a look and, and see what's up, what's going on there.
Any other questions here, our Commissioners?
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman. This lab, this testing, is that something they're, they're already doing at a, the facility?
It is, and, um, they, you know, for such a decades-long company with, with that history, they do like to stay on the cutting edge. They've had, um, you know, about 10 years ago, the, some expansion into, into, um, their Long Beach property, if they're, they're, um, larger press there. They, I don't know if you know this, they have a new facility, semi-new facility in, in, I believe in Nevada. But this, uh, will be the core testing, um, area for, for Paramount, so they could continue with their economic vitality here.
All right, then let's open the public hearing, uh, portion. Do we have any testimony tonight?
Uh, no testimony in favor or opposed.
Okay, no testimony. All right, so we need a motion then to close the public hearing.
Gonzalez moves to, uh, close.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes.
Okay, then we need to entertain a motion to adopt the planning commission resolution 23039 for this request for Weber Metals to operate the machine shop and the laboratory at 16706 Garfield.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have, it's moved and?
Second. Gonzalez, second.
Seconded, moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes.
Agenda item number five. This is, um, zoning ordinance text amendment number 30. And, uh, tonight, we're going to be, uh, opening the public hearing portion officially, and then we're going to continue it until our December 6th, 2023 meeting. Okay, but we need a motion to do that.
Uh, Timmons, still moved.
Gonzalez, second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to continue the public hearing to December 6th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes.
Okay, agenda item number six, reports, or reports, uh, city council actions?
Uh, nothing to report.
Okay, nothing to report. Let's move to comments then, any comments from our city attorney?
Uh, no official comments, Mr. Chair, other than, I know it's just November 1st, but we won't be meeting again until December 6th. So I wanted to wish, wish every one of you a happy Thanksgiving.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
You can never go too early, right? I mean, they're probably already doing Christmas right now, right?
Thanksgiving dinner at your house?
I thought you might say something about USC Washington this hour.
I, I, I don't want to talk about USC right now, thank you very much.
All right. Any comment from our Commissioners? No comments, our staff?
No.
No comments from our staff. In that case, we're going to adjourn this meeting, and we will reconvene on December 6th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m.
Call to order the, um, Paramount Development Review Board. May I have a roll call, please?
Board Member Gonzalez?
Here.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Here.
Vice Chair Moody?
Here.
Chair Timmons?
Here. May I have an approval of the minutes, please?
Okay, move to approve.
Motion to approve.
May I have a roll call, please?
Board Member Gonzalez?
abstained.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Moody?
Yes.
Chair Timmons?
Yes.
Okay, so we're down to, do we, we don't have any public comments?
No comments, no.
Okay. Under new business, um, DRA number 23007, um, to approve, I guess I need a motion, to approve a request by Steve Boss, manager of Paramount Place LLC for Stinking Crawfish Restaurant LLC to replace six parking spaces with a permanent outdoor dining area at 8009 Alondra Boulevard, Suite B, in the PDPS planned development with performance standard zone.
Gonzalez moves to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Board Member Gonzalez?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Moody?
Yes.
Chair Timmons?
Yes. Uh, we're down to item number three. Um, I need a motion for, um, to approve a request by Michael ABA Pump Engineering Incorporated for Weber Metals Incorporated to convert an existing 1,531 square foot storage area of an existing building to a machine shop and laboratory and construct a 1,765 square foot second floor area to the building at 16706 Garfield Avenue in the heavy manufacturing zone.
Gonzalez moves to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Board Member Gonzalez?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Chair Moody?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murray, I'm sorry. And Chair Timmons?
Yes.
Okay, we're at item number four. I'm just passing over, we have no staff report, right?
We do have a presentation on this one.
Okay, good thing I stopped.
Okay, so, yes, this is, uh, uh, this is, uh, for a mural at the storage facility on Minnesota Avenue, uh, just south of, uh, Alondra. And it's under construction right now. And, um, you tentatively looked at the mural when we presented the project to you. And, uh, now we've got a final project, and John King will go over the details with you.
Thank you, John, thank you, Chair Timmons and, and Board Members. We always like talking about art. It's a nice little change of pace, and this one is a, um, a real pro, her, her name's Ms. Yellow. And I see a typo on the right, Ms. Yellow, there's no space between Ms. and Yellow, that's, that's her way. So she, um, just, her proposal is to paint a non-commercial mural on the existing, on the exterior walls of the, uh, storage facility, which is under construction. And why non, non-commercial, it's not advertising anything, and that's actually by, by our code, so, I guess a self-storage facility could have a mural of boxes maybe to symbolize. So I guess a self-storage facility could have a mural of boxes, maybe to symbolize, you know, they're, they sell boxes for packing. And if they were to propose that, it would not be allowed. So this is just neutral from whatever is inside the building, so a non-commercial mural. And as John mentioned, you, you approved this, the building, the construction and the design in October of last year. When a project is valued at $100,000 or more, then that triggers the, the public art fee, and that's a 1% fee. So a, a lot of applicants, they, they include the check in their building, their permits, in their payments for, for building permits. And others like this applicant, they, they're doing it in lieu of paying the fee, they're paying the artist. So they do have a contract with this artist. This is their selection. This is what they very much want. The title is Cosmic Self-Healing Love, and fitting for Ms. Yellow, there's, there are no spaces between those words. And in her words, it's meant to radiate positivity and, and love. So in the spirit of positivity and Paramount, this, we're all in favor of that. So on this next slide, it shows the location at the northeast of Minnesota and Madison, just one property up from, from the intersection. In the very industrial area, most of these buildings are, you know, metal or, or tilt-up concrete, tilt-up walls, concrete structures, kind of, you know, older. So this is exciting, that it's, it's a new structure, it's taller than a, a lot of them. And we thought then, rather than having, we, we agree with the applicant to, to bring a muralist in, and rather than just having some plain walls to kind of brighten it up a bit. On the right is the, is the site plan. And here it is. This is the photo from, from today. This is how the building looks. So it's working, the construction workers are making their way up, they're calling for inspection as they go. The inspectors are, are out every week. And here's the building, and it may look familiar, the, the design. There was a kind of a, a whole placeholder design, but this, this is actually what the applicant is requesting in their contract with the, with Ms. Yellow. So yep, there's some abstract shapes with the colors radiating that positivity, and there's some animals in there to, you know, for the spirit of, of compassion. And here's a closer look and how, how it'd be from, from the view, looking kind of north, northeast. And you can see a, a bird kind of in the middle of, of the building. And a little about Ms. Yellow, she works all over the world. She is internationally well-known. I might have mentioned this the last time, when the Ukraine conflict broke out, she was actually, she flew over there, she, she didn't care. So she was actually, well, she was nearby, she was in Poland. But she's done work in, in Haiti, in Asia, and up and down the world and the United States. I think she was last in Florida. So meeting a number of goals, this meets the city council and community goals, bringing color and energy to blank walls, deter graffiti and vandalism. It does look very high for graffiti, but as, as you know, if you wanted, those who do graffiti, they'll, they'll find a way. So this will deter that. It's inspirational, uplifting, adding value to the properties and, and the community, and breaking up that dull tan we see. It would be a source of community pride, and we look forward to, to a ribbon-cutting, and I'm sure we'll all be there. With that, we recommend approval, and we're happy to answer any questions. And, and the applicant is in the audience, I should add.
Do we have any questions from our Commissioners?
I just had, I had one question, John. You said that even though this is a storage place, that if the, if the builders and the owners wanted to put some type of artwork related to storage, or some type of storage theme, that would not be allowed?
No, that would not be allowed. I'll give you a, a real example. Sinclair gas station, that is a, the gas station at Alondra in Paramount, and they have the dinosaur theme. Well, the owners approached staff about a mural, a prehistoric mural with dinosaurs, and, you know, nothing to do with gas, but just even that, even the, the dinosaur is giving that impression of, you know, this is Sinclair. We reviewed it by the code, and it, it was just a little too close. So that might be a less obvious one, but others might be, you know, a pet shop with, you know, a happy dog or happy cat on the wall. Unfortunately, yeah, that, that wouldn't work. That would be considered a sign.
Okay, thanks. Is that a, like a state thing, or is that go city by city?
It's definitely city by city. And city, yes, and that was the, the direction of the city council. Good question.
Great-looking mural, huh?
I think it's beautiful. I think it's beautiful. I think it brings elegance, and it brightens up that building. So congratulations, I think it's really nice. I have heard of Ms. Yellow. I thought it was MZ, Yellow. That's what I've heard, because it's all over the place, you know, so, I mean, the name, so.
You're not going to try to calm down the colors this time, right?
No. I like the colors this time.
I do, too.
Yes, I like the colors. Okay, any other questions? Okay, can I have a motion to approve a request? Am I at the right one? By Joe T., Paramount owner LLC, for a professional artist to paint a non-commercial mural on the walls of a self-storage facility building at 15932 Minnesota Avenue in the heavy manufacturing zone.
Gonzalez moves to approve.
Second.
May I have roll call, please?
Board Member Gonzalez?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Moody?
Yes.
Chair Timmons?
Yes.
So do we have any comments?
Nothing from staff.
Any comments from our board members? I'll move to adjourn the meeting until December 6, 6:00 PM.
Call to order, the Paramount Economic Development Board, a meeting of November 1, 2023. Roll call of members, please.
Board Member Timmons?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Here.
Vice Chair Moody?
Here.
Chair Gonzalez?
Here.
Have a move to approve the minutes of October 4, 2023.
Timmons, so moved.
Yeah, I'll second.
Roll call.
Board Member Timmons? Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Moody?
Yes.
Chair Gonzalez?
Stained.
Do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
No new business, oral report?
Yes, John King will give you a presentation, oral presentation on filming permits.
Thank you, John. And I, as I'm speaking, I forgot, I remember, I remember that I forgot. I forgot to credit Planning Intern Leslie Corales on the mural report. She worked very hard on that report, and she's not here this evening, so it's important to acknowledge her, her, her work on that with the applicant. So filming permits, just a very, very, very brief presentation. Excuse me, like, excuse me, like all cities in, especially in this Los Angeles area with, with Hollywood, we have a process for filming. If a production, whether it's even still production for, for a lot of cases, but commercials, movies, what else? Just shorts or, or student, student productions, you know, we have, like, I guess USC has a, and Chapman Universities, they have film schools and, and other community colleges, I'm sure. So we, we do get applications. We have a process here. For decades, I'm sure, we've, we've had an ordinance on the books. We did update ours probably 10 years ago. At this time, we, there is no fee, but we are considering, at the direction of the city council and our finance department, considering implementing a, a nominal fee for, to, just to compensate for, for our, for staff time. But just want to go through a few examples. We get about maybe three or four a year. We had one, let's see, exterior filming of a grocery store. I believe this was Grocery Outlet for a, a commercial. There was a commercial at the Super A Market. What is it, the helpful Toyota, is that the one where they, helpful Honda people? Yeah, they gave away eggs, they gave away eggs to people. So it was kind of interesting seeing that, or, or nice, exciting to see, to see, see that, our, our town on television. There's some, been some documentaries. Here's one, Rocha Charia filming for online content, 6400 Alondra, I believe that's Home Depot, base camp and crew parking, so Home Depot did a commercial. So yeah, a lot of commercials. There was one that was, that we approved to, for a horse running along the LA River in a helicopter, but for some reason, that, that did not pan out. So some, some make it and some don't. I slander, they do get some requests from time to time. I believe there was an episode of Buffy, the Vampire Slayer, that was, that was filmed there. So always interesting, and as we get anything we'd like to highlight in the future, we'll, we'll let you know.
And just, one movie you might remember, Once Upon a Time in Hollywood. The, there was a, a scene that they filmed at the drive-in theater with Brad Pitt and...
Brad Pitt's trailer.
Yes.
Where he lived in the movie.
So he didn't have to pay a fee then? They didn't have to pay a fee for that one?
Uh, just a business license.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And they, they, I believe they provided their own security, so they didn't have to pay for sheriff's deputies or anything.
Well, of course, it's Brad Pitt. He has his own.
I guess, is there any consideration whether it's full profit or, or not?
At this time, no, but that is a good point. When, as I mentioned, we're considering a, a fee, and the thought is to not, not impose a fee for non-commercial filming, back to non-commercial, if it's a, a student film, for example.
I like that approach. Comments, questions for board members? Comments from staff?
Nothing.
With that being said, we adjourn to our December 6 meeting at 6:00 PM.